Evening. Welcome. I'm only one minute late for our steps to record, so thank you very much. We have nothing to report out of closed session. Mrs. Boyer, will you reestablish the rule?
Yes. Good evening. Board member Deborah Vincent.
Present.
Board member Fernando Navarro.
Present.
Board member Claire Smith.
Here.
Board vice president Walter Ruley.
Here.
Board president Diane Gibson-Grey.
Here. And I forgot to mention, we will be going back into closed session after this meeting. So with that, if you'll rise and perform the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. We will go to approve of board minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, all those opposed say nay, and those abstaining say aye. We have one more question. Get back into the routine. Ms. Nello, superintendent district board?
Yeah, I just want to compliment the students and staff at Deer Valley High School today for their response to the, someone made a threat, and their speedy response in notifying parents, the community, and all of that turned out not to be a credible threat. We're thankful for that. Everyone's safe, but great job by their staff and students. I also wanted to share with the board a public service announcement that was made by students at Deer Valley that's currently playing at the Maya Cinema. It's regarding attendance. We know that if kids aren't in school, it's hard to learn. So this runs, do you have that up, Mr. Corser?
Yes.
It's very short, but I thought you might enjoy it. It highlights also the students in the video are actually Herman Dragon students.
Where's the lights? Can you get that one?
They're over there behind you.
Yeah. Sorry.
Just get it off of there so you can see. They're buried.
Clear?
No. Okay, that's good.
Good job.
Yeah, I thought they did a really nice job. So as you know, that's been a huge focus this year, and especially as it pertains to early attendance in grades K-3, because when students aren't reading proficiently by third grade, playing catch-up is extremely difficult. There's not a very high likelihood later of kind of catching that, so just wanted to share that. We are working also with the, I always get this wrong, it used to be Regal, then it was AMC, I don't know what it's called now. Deer Valley, I'll call it the cinema in the Deer Valley Plaza. We are also working with them. I was surprised to find how relatively, I mean, how low of a cost a way of getting our message out that is. I expect it to be really expensive and how mass you're, I mean, you have a captive audience when they're eating their popcorn. So, anyway, just wanted to share that with the board, and those are my thoughts for the evening.
And we have incredibly talented students.
Oh, my gosh.
We appreciate that.
Absolutely.
And I would also like to, at my, and I'm sure the board will probably concur, but I don't want to speak for them, thank you for the swift response. It's so much better to be in front than behind, so thank you for that. Student delegate reports. There's three. You want to do rock, paper, scissors or just go on the marker?
Arm wrestle.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Good evening, Board of Education and members of the community. My name is Jordan Cocord, and I'm here representing all three alternative ed sites of Prospects, Bidwell, and Lyevok. At Prospects High School in November, December, and January, our leadership students and prospects alike were exposed to two presentations about the harmful effects that tobacco, vape pens, and electronic cigarettes can cast to the body. These presentations were given by Eric, a two-page youth outreach agency coordinator from Contra Costa County Office of Education. These were all received by our students. On January 26th, we declared a quarter to award ceremony. We had three students in the corner. The winner of this impressive award went to Kendra Franks, who graduated as a young Kendra on her academic achievements. Senior readings were held mid-gen of both students and the parents aware of their students' incredible completion and possible credit deficiency, discussing options for continued education toward their high school program. We have daily students at Prospects who won the shooting of the options daily to students in grades kindergarten through twelfth. Leadership students sign up weekly in leadership class to help support our lunch program and the student body as a whole. It is very touching and heartbreaking to see our, our one of those day can affect us soon. To start to celebrate, that Lord Almord, one of our senior leadership students, Carlos Hernandez, to spread and help students out of the elementary school on Tuesdays and Thursdays in our school reading and writing program. Carlos has been well received by staff and students and is doing outstanding job. Joseph Briggs, a new leadership student of Dr. Duncan Kelly and Al Captain last Thursday, February 11th, at Antioch High School. Joseph has a singing voice for Prospects and shared about his academic personal experience as a Prospects High School student.
That's okay.
We begin to be very proud of our leadership students in our district, our community, and our one of us who have kicked off a kindness to our district. Sorry, I missed. We have kicked off the case with a mentor and have created students in South Dora around them and to kindness for someone during February 14th through 20th. And I hope to see a continued beyond these states. From reason, it has been planned to help support our Prospects High School. And each year, the California to cancel adult education on its adult ed staff for self-service to adult education students and programs. Congratulations to Diana Goodizer for seeing the adult ed excellence in teaching, our district, and Patricia Stanton for excellent support services. Last weekly, last week, the intake except for incoming Prospects High School students have continued to be consistent. We also continue to graduate students and are extremely excited about this year's root floor and our joint undergrounds. Goodwell High School is a belonging to chasing freedom. This is a third edition that compiles three plays, wheels of parks, C-3 showers, and black silver light and black lights movement into one place. Mr. Daniel Brown, the little art teacher, is representing the small group with the students' honors project. The students will be performing at Oak House on Thursday, March 3rd. The opening house will begin at 6:00 p.m. with a meet and greet for the pet with our student teachers. The John Will Chasing Pig will begin at 6:30 p.m. Goodwell is in the process of building a school garden. The magic garden part is done and self-planted. And, and, yeah, sorry. Now, if listening, lots, the sugar snap peas, California oats, onions, and potatoes are all weathering in the cold, hot, cold weather. Mix up the garlic who is spreading bush gravel walkways, plenty of carrots, bunches, and the plumbing for the loose bread plus the usual joss and cobustine reed. We have finished spring. The goodness staff has broken hard for the walking, once it, some seven days. The once it begins on Sunday, February 20th, includes on St. March 1st. Lyevok has second quarter award ceremony on Friday, January 15th. On January 12th, staff has students attended the release of membership training with Mrs. Libby. On February 12th, the Lyevok students working about Miss Libby and participated in two workshops in Berkeley. Staff and students are bringing up their first, once I take mood cycle, we visit on Saturday, February 22nd and 23rd. The school's spirit day are raised above the Lyevok. During the month of January, we celebrate sweat stain, and February, we be dressing as twins. In conclusion, during the month of March, we will be having pizza night and mountain max on the trailway next year, always from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. So everyone is invited to attend, we will be having a blood drive for on March 15th, and I'd like for you to consider donating to such a work cause. Thank you.
Very nice. Jordan, you did a really, really good job presenting your schools, and when you go back to Bidwell, will you tell them that it just made me feel really happy to know you're redoing the gardens at Bidwell? My kids all went there. That was, the initial intent was to have gardens all the time, so that's really nice you guys are bringing those back. Thank you.
Why she's handing those out. Carla Mixon, are you a community member or staff?
Community member.
Community member. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Board of Education and members of the community. My name is Alejandro DiMiguel, and I'm here representing Deer Valley High School. The annual DVHS Winter Ball was held on Saturday, December 4th, 2015. The year is beating the beast, a tale as old as time. DV's leadership class trey after themselves with the Jack correlations, which is running the south gym into an elegant ballroom. Over 500 DVHS students and guests attended, and a fabulous time was enjoyed by all. On January 15th, Deer Valley held its annual fashion show during fall lunches. This annual event showcases the latest fashion and trends in prime time for both girls and girls. DV juniors and seniors representing a variety of academics and extracurricular activities participated. The event is sponsored by Texas Class and Men's Warehouse, who graciously supplied the models with tuxedos and bodys dresses. Through the Deer Valley's World of our capgram, there are many 30 high schools statewide that was selected to participate in innovative research program called Nation Edition. This program was created by the University of Southern California, from the Spanish Senate for higher education and giving any vision lab to make a plan to college more accessible to students. Deer Valley students earn points by playing again to cultivate college and financial aid application strategies. Currently, Deer Valley is one second in the statewide competition, but we're gaining on May Island Tech Academy each day. DV win cash prizes in a celebrity pistol for a day if we win. The contest ends February 26th. Congratulations to DV junior Kyra Chapman, who took first place at the Contra Costa Poetry Out Loud competition held at Los Matas High in the Morning Creek on February 6th. Kyra will go on representing Contra Costa County at the City Poetry Out Loud competition in Sacramento on April 8th and 29th. She will contribute for hundreds of dollars in prize money and a chance to represent California in the national competition. Congratulations Kyra, well said. Congratulations also go to DV freshman Jerry Shadah, who backed Deer Valley in its first NCS Girls Wrestling title in the 160-pound category. The competition took place on Friday, February 12th, and Saturday, February 13th, at Albany High School. Summer career bonds is also placed forth in the 131-pound category. DV is very proud of our wrestlers and excited by these new accomplishments. NCS Academy students are busy praying for the upcoming Intel-Athwart rated Contra Costa County Science and Engineering Fair, which will held at Los Matas College on March 17th through March 19th. Topics being investigated by DV students this year range from green energy to physiology to psychology. In December 2015, Avid Academy teachers saved $100,000 of the donation bank from California Department of Education's specialized secondary program. This grant is intended to implement robotics curriculum being hired and developed at DVHS. The grant will be used for purchasing federal components, current curriculum materials, and desktop manufacturing equipment, such as 3D printers. A group of students currently enrolled in the introduction to robotics and electronics pilot course are independently working at building a drone, which is very exciting. Some upcoming events and appointments on February 22nd through 26th is our Western Week, where we award students who have earned good grades. February 26th is our Black Light Dance, which every grade level is able to attend. Also, March 3rd is our Open House. Friday, March 11th is our Power Play game against Antioch High School, where senior girls are able to participate. Saturday, March 19th is a junior prom. And March 21st through 24th is our Staff Appreciation Week, where we are able to share appreciation towards teachers and staff. And Friday, March 3rd through Saturday, April 3rd is our spring break. Thank you.
Are you a student speaker, Jeff? No, just a hair is here. Okay, great. So with that, and you may go now. Please don't wait around. Thank you very much. Now we go to individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda from the public. Just a reminder, you have three minutes. In the three minutes, I will say thank you very much and call the next person, or to be really consistent. So with that, we will go to the first one. Nicole, and I don't have a last name, so I'm assuming you know who you are. Nicole, thank you.
Good evening. And I'm here to address the board about the lack of communication with the staff at Deer Valley High School. I know that school was put in place to offer a way to communicate with the staff, but in a lot of cases, and I'm not going to say all teachers, a lot of them don't respond in a timely manner. They don't interwork. In order to be able to hold my son accountable and help him through the process, if he enters the work over the last week of working period, I can't help make sure that he's doing what he's supposed to do in passing class. And I've had teachers tell me that it's not in their contract to email and respond to parents in school. And as far as communication is concerned, the first time I heard about a lack of Deer Valley is just now. I just checked my emails, I don't have an email from Deer Valley, and I don't have a phone list from them. My phone number has not changed until my son is attending the school there. So I am not coming in a negative way. I'm looking for our community to be able to offer better support to our students and to the staff, so that we can work together to make sure that our students can succeed in better.
I appreciate that. Have you spoken to the administration?
I've talked to the administrative here. Last year, I started out each semester by emailing all of our students' teachers.
Well, if our staff will take more information than just this, if you don't mind giving it to somebody.
Okay.
I apologize. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Okay.
If I could have your telephone, we'll check with technology. It comes through our central system, so your number must not ever be correct. Right. We'll take care of that if you'd like to.
I apologize for cutting you off, but I just want to make sure we had a solution for you, okay? Thank you very much.
Put that last name, so I can.
Yes. Great. Next is Julie Young, followed by Carla Mixon. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, and board members. This evening, I am here to bring something to your attention and to every parent in this district. On February 1st, Judge Kimberly Miller ordered that the California Department of Education release the student records of all students that attended any California schools in March 1st, 2008. To the plaintiffs in a lawsuit, Morgan Hill Concerned Parents Association and Concerned Parents Association versus the California Department of Education. The court ruled that only the parties that are returning statements and the courts that have access to the records, and when they were done, they would be returned or destroyed. They claim that most students identifying records will be disclosed to the public. I do not want my children's information to be disclosed to some people in Morgan Hill involving lawsuit I know nothing about. We should not be so naive to think security breach had never happened. When other members target and think of America, there is no reason to believe that the security precautions taken here will be any better than those taken by large corporations which have been subject to security breaches. Examples of information that is stored on the California Department of Education's database is the student's name, their social security number, their address, demographics, their IEP, their special education assessments, their student statewide identifiers, their attend statistics, results of their state tests, suspensions, expulsions, et cetera. As parents, we don't have any protection against something like this because FOPA and IDEA have been modified to read. The Federal Education Right to Privacy Act, which is FOPA, and the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA, are federal laws that protect privacy of student records. These laws promote the disclosure of these records to comply with a court order. And this is a court order. There's only one way to make sure that your child's information is not included, and that is to fill out an opt-out form. It has to be mailed in the court's hand by April 1st, 2016. They give less than 60 days for the parents to comply. Unfortunately, those parents will not know about this lawsuit or their rights, and their children's information will be sent out. So you can find the opt-out form on the California Education site. Thank you.
Thank you.
Like Ms. Young, we were concerned when we heard the ruling when it came out, and we've been in close, following it closely, talking with our attorneys to make sure that only that information, which is absolutely required for any of our students, goes out. We also have added a link to our website, because a lot of our parents won't actually go to the CDE website, so they can also get the form there. So.
Thank you very much.
Is this for currently enrolled students or past former?
Uh, no.
2008.
Since 2008. Oh, 2008, okay.
Thank you very much. Carla Mixon.
Hi, hello everyone. Good afternoon. My daughter, who is an eighth grader at Park Middle School, is not able to run the school's traditional park mile in 15 minutes required to pass and receive credit. She consistently struggles. The school's mile is rigorous with incline, decline, and has an uneven ground. My daughter has demonstrated she can run four basic laps around the track less than 15 minutes, with me outside of school and, and I'll make up the days at school. The problem is, is Kalia has always, I'm sorry, Kalia always has to make up the mall before because she can never pass a park's traditional mile. This is not fair, is a problem. I have spoken to the P.E. teacher Trish Howe about this. She is not willing to allow my daughter to run on the traditional track. She refuses. This is a disservice to my child. Mr. Jimno has known about this problem since the end of September, the beginning of October 2015. We've had numerous conversations and couple of meetings. Mr. Jimno is a very good talker, but he hasn't been productive in resolving the issue. He has not taken care of this issue and has not supported this student. In the beginning conversation with him and I was, he'll visit the track to check on her. I've talked to Mrs. Howe about running on the track. He has told me, you're, you're the only one that has this issue about the mile, which is not true. They're saying Kalia is not making effort. They have too many kids for her only to run the track. A meeting was set up by Mr. Jimno, 12:07. He canceled at the last minute and rescheduled it for, and rescheduled it for 12:09, with the P.E. teacher present and a union representative, which I was not informed about. He had his own agenda for the meeting, and my concerns for my daughter were not addressed. Ms. Calavero, I came down here to speak with Ms. Kelly Calavero several times, and only after speaking to her several times, she directed me to Mr. Larson. I contacted Mr. Larson on 12:10. No answer. I left a message. He returned the phone call the next day at 4:00 p.m. on a Friday. He has not returned my call yet. I want this issue addressed and resolved. The traditional park mile at Park Middle School is not a fair assessment of how our children should be graded on basic four laps around the track mile.
Thank you very much. You answered the questions whether I have for the other woman, if you tried to resolve it at the school site, you have. So would you mind leaving your contact information?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Sticky, sticky. Yes, thank you very much. Next is Melanie Wilson.
Good evening, school board trustees, interns, supervisors, staff in the district staff, teachers, parents, students, and community. Happy Black History Month. In our own back door is a wonderful display of African-American artifacts put together by Roja Community Outreach. And due to lack of funding, school sites cannot afford to pay for district buses to transport students to visit the museum. I would like to see fundings that apply for this, or free bus services provided to those schools wanting to take their students to see this historic showcase. For those interested, the artifact museum will close for this year on Saturday, February 20th, and I encourage you to visit and bring with your children. On Wednesday, February 24th, at 6:30 p.m., Park Middle School will be hosting a star-studded Black History celebration. And I ask that everyone, spread the word, invite your families at your schools, especially in those target areas, and let's pack the multipurpose room. This event will feature a array of student presentations, an African dance school, comedy, smooth jazz, and so much more. Then, on February 25th, Jack London Elementary will host its Black History celebration at 6:00 p.m., another interactive event full of student presentations and music. This is parent engagement at its finest. I hear too often from the school sites that start struggling with getting parents involved, especially those of ethnic diversity. Parents want to know that their child is being introduced to icons and those in history that look like them. Let's face it, African-American history is not for or about those with African heritage, but about a history that affects all of us as Americans. Black history is American history. So join me at these events in a way that the parents and students know that we are one Antioch. On this past Monday, BDMS, that's Black Diamond School, had a free showing of the award-winning movie, "Thoma," a movie that was a huge, huge turning point in American history. The event was poorly attended, but it went on. Thank you to Phyllis James, the staff of the BDMS, and the district for allowing this viewing. The custodian was absolutely phenomenal, and I thank you. Now, should this have been better attendance? Yes. More promotion and reading the word out? Yes. But it is what it is. We are still one Antioch, and we all need to come together more for the good of the community and the family that you all represent. We need not try to tear each other down, those that are trying to help and bridge gaps in those areas where parent involvement, parent engagement is lacking, and is so, so crucial. I am here to support the efforts of parent involvement and engagement, and that will never change. The subject matter may have been uncomfortable, but the fact is, American history is African-American history. We're still fighting at 2016 for the right to vote. So go figure. Thank you. God bless, and we shall overcome someday.
Scott Benedict. Oh, Scott, I apologize. We have now moved on, I recognize your name, to items not on the agenda from the board. Welcome.
I'm glad you recognized me. Appreciate that.
That's a good thing or a bad thing?
Well, you've been up to my classroom a number of times, and we recognize each other quite often at different events, so I appreciate that. One other thing I want to talk about, I do appreciate the team we have working here. I, I want to have a, I think we need to have a dress down there or something, or staff from here and staff from everybody else goes up and meets everybody, because I ran into Tim out on the, going to the pet store. He has a dog. I learned all kinds of things about Tim that I didn't know, and I've known him for eight years or nine years, and so I said, you know, and he sings, and he plays instruments, and, you know, and I didn't recognize him without his suit on, and I said, you know, we need to do more of that, so, anyway. And on top of that, I learned a little bit more about what he does as his job, because he's had a few things, a little job creep, and he's been handling it outstandingly, in my opinion. I love our computers and the things that we've gotten in, and they've been done, and they're all good, eh, and they work, and we're all crafts. Anyway, thank you for that. The entire team we have here, Stephanie, our new sped director, Ruth, is outstanding. I think we're starting to congeal a little bit of like C-chain and things, and I like that. In saying that, I kind of hope we don't do something like have a new director that, I mean, a new, not a director, but superintendent, that it has a new agenda and we have to change again, because I think we're going in a good direction, just to throw that out. The thing that I want you to do is consider that, from the standpoint of AEA, you know, I'm a beaner, and I'm a mentor teacher, and all that stuff. I get to meet the young teachers, and I think it's something that I've somewhat overlooked, and I wanted to make sure that in your stood in, in meeting them, these young teachers and I wanted to make sure that in your stood in, in meeting them, these young teachers, you know, they're starting at the bottom of the pay scale, and they want to come to Antioch with, and maybe have a family. A lot of things we all did when we first started in our teaching careers and stuff. And, you know, they look at hiring from the standpoint of, what's the salary? Because they're competing against everybody else that's getting $40,000 or $50,000 a year, and then the benefits. The benefits have to be there, and that's like a game changer for all of them. And they also say that same thing, because, you know, they say, well, in the next, you know, three, four, five years, I'm going to have children. I want to make sure that I can have the medical benefits I need. So that's a big thing, and a lot of us Boomers sort of say, hey, you know, let's make sure we get it, because you want to stay competitive with the other districts, and, you know, you've seen the flower seller, everybody knows where everybody else is. We need to stay competitive. Well, put a word in for the younger teachers, I think that's a really, you know, the newer teachers that you want to hire. I mean, you need to fill this district up for the next 20 years, okay? Thank you very much.
With that, we, thank you very much. We will move to, we have no district reports, we have no public presentations, we have no hearings. Action items, student stipulated expulsion, E. 670, 71, 671, 673, 674, 675, and 678. Any questions, concerns, or a motion?
Move approval.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I just assume I say aye unless I don't. Five zero. Next, we have contract for leadership associates. Mr. Forster, you did the staff report. Do you seek or do you speak? I'm not sure who's the, basically, we have the contract, if you've had it to review, they were our pick. Does anybody have any questions or concerns? With that, do we have any motions? We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have it, five zero. California School Boards Association Delegate Assembly, it was very simple, there's three people running, unless you want to pull anybody off, if you just want to go with the slate as the most approval. We will have a motion, is there a second? Oh, and then we'll go for confirmation. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, now we have questions.
So this is the choice we have for our region, correct?
Right. You can write somebody in if you want.
Got it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, five zero.
Would you just mind just saying the names?
Oh, yes, I will. Page 41 on through 43. That's okay. I could have said them. Laura Cantamela, Katie McLaughlin, Damon Valerity. Okay? Thank you very much. And it is hot in here.
Same ones, over and over.
Over and over again.
Nothing changes.
Since, but let's take the consent counter by item. Any concerns, questions, poll items for business and operations? Why, they're looking, I'm just going to give my one comment. I'm not a fan of payback bids, you know, in my opinion, the more bids you have, the competitive, the better, so that's just commentary, not a reflection of my vote. Any questions? Shall we move forward? Okay. Curriculum instructions, do we have any items that we want to discuss or poll?
I have an, the English language supplemental.
Okay, we're going, we're speaker on that, so do you want to do it now, or do you want me to just pull the item off and we'll discuss? So let's just pull that one, I think it's easier.
And I just had a comment on item A, under curriculum and instruction.
So, and I have on C, so let's just pull all three of those off for extra discussion if anybody, okay? Human resources, we have the ever-present change in certificated on your dius and classified, right?
There is only a.
Sorry, there's only a classified revision, the same.
Only one?
Yes. Okay, record. So it's on the diet, and it's on the table if anybody has any questions. Any questions or commentary on any of those? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion for consent counter, business and operations, all items? Number one, and human resources, all items.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead. We have a motion, a second, by Ms. Vincent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
They both pass, five zero. Let's go to Ms. Vincent, you'll be first. Curriculum instruction, item number A.
So that would be one, and I'm just going to make a comment and say that I do am aware of the Office of Indian Education Consortium agreement, and also that this is managed by Rattainish Unified Student District. What I wanted to ask is, how many students do we have in our district that are clear of Indigenous Native American ancestry? Do we know that?
I don't know. Okay. I have a candidate that I believe is something like 1.8%.
I was thinking 2%.
Yeah.
Off the top of my head, because.
And the other thing I want to say is that I do support this curriculum. When my daughter attended here, I made sure that she went to the summer camps, you know, with the Indian Curriculum Office of Indian Education, because that is a part of our heritage. And so I do appreciate that we are maintaining this contract, and I think that is something positive, and I just want to put that comment out there, that it is a good camp, it is a relevant camp, and anything that we can do to help raise our students' cultural is bringing it forward.
Thank you. Any more conversation on that item? If not, do we have a motion? I think we have a motion, Ms. Vincent, second. I missed a ruling, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, five zero. English language arts, Mr. Navarro.
Yeah, I had a concern about, well, first of all, the content of the textbooks, and secondly, the logic of paying in eight years in advance when information is fluid. We're in the middle of an election year, and you may have a change of administration that might consider Common Core to not be the, you know, the whole point is, my question is, the logic of having to pay upfront in years with material.
The state of California, the way the adoption process goes, it's showing green, it's, is that loud enough?
No.
When California adopts textbooks, they have usually a seven-year cycle, and then they put forward books that we can adopt. And so we ended up being an early adopter of Common Core, as I wrote in this board report. The intent is probably that we would be looking at a new adoption in the next five to seven years, but that when I came in to this interim position, Tim had already been working with our curriculum people and recognized that by having this contract and paying upfront that we were able to actually get a better price over the five to seven years that we would be adopting or keeping the current materials than if we paid a year by year as we're doing right now. And so knowing that the state, even if Common Core goes away, textbook money doesn't come easily in the state of California, and we probably would not be going out for new adoption for quite a while. For language arts, yes, there might be some changes, but the changes that we're working at for the new materials here are around writing process. And as you can see, writing process from the presentation today is very, very important in this district, and that's not going to change dramatically there. So I think the support of these new materials, even though it talks Common Core, is still very solid curriculum, and I think that we just don't have the money every two to three years to be looking at a million and a half dollar adoption. So, and we hadn't adopted a lot of other materials in other content areas, so you'll be seeing some other materials coming forward the next couple of years. These are big adoptions when you go out.
Was there an overlap with the no child left behind policy? Did we do the same thing?
Yes, both happened. When no child left behind came in, again, there was no money there for a while, then all of a sudden, the state at that time had an influx of funding and gave all the districts quite a bit of money to do adoptions. That, right now, is being piggybacked on a new funding formula, and so it's not earmarked specifically for textbooks, as it used to be in the past, and so we need to be very careful in how we're looking at spending money for textbooks.
Well, thank you.
So I just wanted to also comment and says that in less than five years, we will recoup the cost.
Yes.
Okay, and then we'll have a three years, we'll have three years left on the contract?
If you can, my understanding is, then, even if in five years, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm happy to always be corrected, but in five years, we'll have, recoup the cost, so even if we pull out of the contract, we're not going to lose money if we change textbooks or whatever, because over those five years, they were going to charge us anyway what it was going to be for eight years. Does that make sense?
Uh huh. Got it. It probably would have been easier to understand if we had a line that said this equals a savings.
So, I tried doing that. It became very difficult, kind of convoluted.
Yeah, because it's very, it's challenging to figure out what that number is.
It was challenging to write this one for you, to try to explain it.
Good questions. Other questions?
Yeah, the only other comment I have is that we have to just make sure that these books remain culturally relevant and up to date, so that they're meeting the educational and academic needs of our students, because oftentimes, we're paying, and sometimes those books are obsolete, and then what do we with those materials? This district has spent a lot of money on books that we haven't used because they, you know, they become obsolete in terms of the, you know, the academic rigor. So I think we just have to be really careful, making sure we're making our, doing our assessments.
And I just want to say, too, the nice thing is, these are not the actual textbook, these are the consumables. So we have a lot more with the new curriculum we're seeing are all consumables, because they began to recognize that textbooks get stale.
Yes.
So these can be updated annually and that sort of.
You still weren't reading that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So without asking specifics on the spot like this, can I assume that no child left behind has cost us something in consumables, is it in textbooks, or is it something of a wash, usability, update, maintenance?
No, we were ready for a new adoption, and that, I mean, we would have been adopting this year had we not been early adopters. So what just happened is that because the materials had been in for quite a few years before, in the, from the last language arts adoption in this district, this district chose two years ago to come in as an early adopter, knowing that these materials were being reviewed by the state and probably going to be adopted. So at the time, and I'm sorry I wasn't here, but Stephanie, you can probably speak to it, but from my understanding is that we needed some new materials about two years ago. The, you know, our adoption had probably been about seven or eight years prior to that for language arts, and I can say the same for San Ramon. Yeah, we had stopped receiving instructional funds quite some time ago. Districts could sweep those into the general fund, so we had during the very lean years not purchased books, so as Deborah pointed out, they could get, become obsolete. And so when the Common Core money came along, a lot of districts chose to use it for infrastructure for technology, not knowing that down the road, the state was then going to release more money. We chose instead, had to say, what can we put in the hands of teachers and students, and figure out a way to kind of do the other in a more creative way. So it's kind of what we use a lot of our Common Core funding that we got over a three year period.
Other questions? Do you have a speaker card on it, Julian?
Well, usually I speak before you guys have a discussion.
I wanted you to hear the discussion, then you could talk, so that must be important.
Yeah, so actually, the last edition was 2003, so it was 10 years ago, and then the board did approve reading orders three through five on January 22nd, 2014, and we paid someone, we paid $509,000 for that. And then K through two, I couldn't find any information on that. But these books include one to two hardback books and a workbook for every graded level except kindergarten. And so I guess this is what bothers me about this. Every year, we're paying $97,000 plus tax, that comes to about $105,000, and then with the supplements, they're $87,000. That's almost the same price as the consumables. And so annually, we would be paid $101,000, so we would need to buy the regular books plus the supplements. I don't understand that. And so the deal is, oh, pays $126,000 plus tax, and when I worked it out, it's like, comes out to $100,000, so you're saving $99,000. But what's going to happen, after two to three years, they might come back and go, oh, well, we have another supplement for you. And so then, you know, they're going to need more money out of us. And what's going to happen, you have to pay this two-year increment. It's not like they're giving you eight years to pay it. They want a lot of money next year, and then they want final payment in another year. And then they keep going out of business, and then we wouldn't have books at all. Or, I mean, there's possibility, or they can come back with more supplemental stuff and wanting that, more money from us. We already spent $3.6 million on books, and so, and we're spending so much money every year. It just seems odd to me why we would have to pay $100,000 for the regular consumables and then the supplement. Why don't, why don't they just make a book and say, if it's the consumable one, and we charge you guys $100,000 and take the place of the other one? That's my question. And I don't know, I don't know if you guys have seen the videos of undercover the book companies, and they're not in it for the kids, they're at the sandbox, and that's what Common Core is doing, they're just repackaging everything, putting Common Core on it, and making lots of money. So the other concern I have is that this is a supplement, but it's so much money that it seems like it should go for public review, like we get to look at the books before women who have a new adoption, and this seems like a new adoption to me because it's a lot of money, and apparently, there's supplemental things that take up the, almost the same amount of money as to be given a book. So, thank you.
Any additional comments or questions?
Okay, well, I'm going to give mine. I may be wrong, and, you know, without a spreadsheet, I don't have math skills, but I'm, I'm coming up with like a $100,000 savings. To me, it's not worth it to lock into an eight-year. Things could change, technology changes. I mean, we may not even have paper in eight years, we may be totally digital, so in my mind, I'm not a fan of this, but we'll still vote, of course, but that was my comment I was waiting to make.
Yeah, I might make a couple of comments, just, and again, I've been out for a couple of years here, but, and I know the funding has changed slightly, and maybe Tim can even speak to that, but, but I will tell you, in the past, the way the state adoption went was that you paid big bucks, and I would say for a district this size, you were probably paying about $1.5 million for a K5 adoption, and that what they always did is you kind of paid upfront in effect, but then they, the state had made these arrangements that all the consumables were free, but you were still paying huge amounts upfront. And then if they came up with consumables later, that was usually part of a different adoption, and very rarely did a district go with any other new materials that were coming out. Had we waited two years, we would be doing with other districts that are coming in right now on this adoption, are there, a lot of them are getting both of those books for the same prices we're, you know, that we're getting right now. The difference is, we simply paid two years prior to get into this, earlier into this adoption. So really, the cost over time is probably the same, it's not going to probably change, because in the past, we didn't do that, and when we had an adoption, the adoption lasted seven years, or more. This one, 10 years before we did our last one. So I don't see a huge influx of money coming in from the state to do any more language arts adoptions. You've got math, you've got social studies, you have science coming up, and this district, I just don't think can afford to go back and do a lot more with language arts. This locks in a price, there's nothing to guarantee the price of the materials if we do it year to year, those prices can go up, and so the cost over time may actually be a different cost than $100, $100,000 savings, it may go higher than that. And if we don't lock in this, we pay for the second set of materials, which is what those teachers were asking for. And so we can stay where we are and go year to year and purchase the second workbook or the second consumable, that's the writing portion. or the second consumable that's the writing portion of it at an additional cost every year. Or we can get rolled back in right now, get the new teacher's edition, get some training that's going to be put into that and bring the teachers up to where the rest of the state that's adopting right now would be.
One of the things I did also, hopefully you can hear me tonight, I looked at the total cost of ownership on this when it came to me to the curriculum. So I, when we looked at this, the publisher would only do this two ways. They would do it where we'd done a year by year, which we'd be purchasing every year, or they would do it on this eight-year plan. We look at a total cost of ownership on this, it is around the two and a half year mark of where we start to save money in this eight-year plan over buying it over a year-by-year plan. The publisher also allowed us to make this payment for this eight-year over two fiscal years, which also assisted with finance. So at about the two and a half year mark, the amount we pay is equal. And then it starts increasing in a year-by-year plan. So we would be, after two and a half year mark, each time we paid that yearly, it would be costing additional money where that is funded under the six-year plan.
So I'm just going to say, I remember before hearing that the district spent over $1 million on books that we didn't even use, that they were stuck somewhere in a warehouse. And I hear what trustee Gibson is saying about digital books. And so this would have been a time to present to us, not trusting, but it would have been helpful to have a CBA, cost benefit analysis of what we did before, where the state is and the expectations are, because we have to make a decision on this. And of course, we always have to do what's within the interests of our students and what's within the best interest of our teachers. So that they have the materials they need in the classroom. So if I hear you correctly, you're saying you're in agreement that we should move forward with this based on the information that you have.
I asked a lot of questions when I saw this come by my desk. And that was in the first week that I got this. And this was to have come to you at the last board meeting, but I've been asking a lot of questions, working with Tim, trying to figure this out, trying to do a cost analysis on it myself. And I think that if you're going to keep these books for the length of time, that we typically keep an adoption, that I am in agreement with.
Well, it's not a pretty picture. And I would agree with Ms. Young that the salient is, or lack thereof of the publishing industry is pretty additive. But it terrifies me that with the rate of inflation on books and paper that take a gamble on what's going on, I'd rather lock in.
So my question is more along lines of Diane's, which is the whole digital thing. Because I happen to know that Hooten Mifflin is moving towards digital. Because they have already contracted with someone to roll out their advertisement for their digital books. And I've already seen the pre-abit for that. In fact, the last CSBA conference, the Hooten Mifflin people had a booth in the, and I asked them specifically, it was so new that most of the people there didn't know. So they had to go to their supervisor person. And she was the only one that knew. And she was like, wait, how did you know about? And so I told her. So I am, I'm a little bit concerned that we're locking into paper technology when even we as a board are trying to move into a paperless technology. And I feel like we are behind. This, this week from immunity is the first time since I've been on the board, 21 years, that we had a paperless board agenda. Minus about six, six or 10 sheets of paper that was delivered to us. Everything else was loaded online. To me, that's like a huge step forward into the new world, okay? I am a little worried that we're going from what we consider consumables into what kids consider touchables. Because everything is screened for them. I mean, you see little kids with their mom's cell phones and they're like crazy people. I mean, if something happens to my cellphone, I give it to a person that's like 12. And I say, why is my phone wigging out? And oh, you got to do this to it. Okay, done. So I am a little concerned about that. I do agree with Diane. We are moving to a non-paper educational system. My kids are online. My son's in an online master's program. I mean, everything is digital, the learning, distance learning. And so it does worry me that we're tying up this much money. Because what happens a couple of years down the road, when they say, surprise, we're going digital and you didn't buy digital.
Well, you know, Claire, I agree with you that I think digital is eventually going to be the way that it's going. I mean, they're still struggling at the high school level to figure out how to do high school digital. And if you were poised as a district right now to put a lot of funding in to ensure your students had computers at home, access to computers at home, computers at school to be working with it, then I might be looking at this differently. In five to seven years, you may be there. And so when the next one comes around, that might be a good time for you as a district to be looking at more digital. But I think there's got to be a lot more infrastructure and a way to have your students in this district, our students, accessing the technology. Because unfortunately, so far, what I've seen with the digital technology for textbooks is that it requires specific kinds of software, going on specific kinds of, you know, technology. You know, so it's not always cross-platform. It's not always easy to just say, well, we've got a Mac at home and we've got, you know, it's not always online. And even online, unless you have great, you know, internet connectivity that's out there in your world, you're not going to have your kids accessing it.
So this particular program is not an online, it is a program you download.
You download, yeah.
Specific to grade level.
Right. And, and what I have found with that is that it doesn't, you know, people have old computers that don't, they can't load the software on. And so I just don't think at this point, not only Antioch, but a lot of school districts aren't to the level of their technology infrastructure or the hardware to say, we're going all digital.
And what you say makes complete logical sense. Because just thinking about how long it took this ship to turn, how long is it going to take a district to?
Right.
So that doesn't make logical sense.
But, you know, like we say, when we're ready for the next adoption, you may be there as a district.
What's that? Thank you. We're ready for a vote?
Yeah.
This is our motion.
Make your motion to the board.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, who was that? Raise your hand.
Say who says no.
Okay, all those, those who say no, myself?
Nate.
Okay, two, three, two. I just feel sad that eight years is, we can't get digital in eight years. I come from telecommunications.
It makes me sad too, but what she said actually is really.
I'm hopeful.
I agree, it's going to take us 10 years to get into.
I'm hopeful that we will be there before then. I, item number, by the way, is anybody cold there? I'm not yet, but if you're cold, shut the door. I hear the rain.
I like the rain.
I do too, I thought it was nice. So next we have curriculum instruction, vendor agreement with Parents Connected. Do we have a staff report?
No. It's included in the.
Okay, do we have, anybody wants to talk to it or anybody have? I have questions. Should I start or does somebody else want to start?
Go ahead and start. I have questions too, but you go ahead and start.
Oh, you go.
My, my question is always the same, the amount of money per child. And I don't see on here the same thing that you.
We have something, we have information on the dice, right?
No, I don't have it. Oh, this one. I was looking for the spreadsheet that I saw on my computer.
Now you find it, page is one, similar to what was sent out to you. Page is one, twenty six.
And this is available for the public out there?
Uh, page one, twenty six.
You know, what you sent out.
Uh, it can be me.
Yes, we should have it.
Just in response to a question for a board.
Okay, never mind. Okay, so we, okay, I'll go ahead and start with my question, since it's simple.
Well, I'm going to look at my email to get my spreadsheet, thanks.
So I'm going to go ahead and ask my question. Last year, how much was the contract?
I believe it was $75,000.
Okay. And this year, the total contract is?
Fifty-two, is that right? I think it's in front of you. I have an.
Fifty-two, five hundred.
However, we've been of 48, 630.
Yes, plus the 48.
Plus 52 and what was the amount?
And 48, 100.
So looking at 100. I, I.
For this year, for this year.
For this year. I need to understand why there's an increase. And I'm going to speak from memory, I may be wrong, but I believe last year, I felt it was a little more than the other programs we had. We said, go ahead. And then I thought this year, there was going to be some efficiencies and it would be a little bit lower. I didn't expect a little bit higher. So I need to understand.
And I may, I know Ms. Domenicali, if you don't mind, I may ask her some specific questions also to what I know. We have the same questions. We were presented with the original proposal for this year for 240,000, which we, obviously for the amount of students served, we thought, even though we, we just thought that was.
A little high.
A little high. Per student, when we look at the entire district, per student amount. So I know that she worked with the vendor and had a lot of questions herself. And now it's coming to us at 100,000. And so my question, Ms. Domenicali, do you mind if I bring her forward?
Please.
Sorry. Can you speak to the increase of approximately 25,000 or 25,000?
Um, yes, I can. Yes, I would like to look at that, please.
I'm, I'm thinking that perhaps it's the number of students served.
So the $75,000 was for last year and this year was for the mentee program with College Bound Brotherhood. And that mentee program is one in which Parents Connected serves approximately 50 students directly. And that program involves them working with the mentees on an ongoing basis. It involves them working with the mentees' parents. They get mentors for each of the students. They meet once a month on Saturdays for about half a day, half for the six hours. And they work with those families and their student. In addition to that, they also assist the parents with understanding how to move their students, not only through high school successfully meeting the A to G requirements for college entrance, but also they assist them with matriculation into college. And so their work goes on, they also maintain the portable for about 26 hours a week.
So Mike, can I interrupt? I'm so sorry, I felt rude.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just think the essential question that I hear is, what increased is, what is.
Okay, so, so the increase would be the College Bound Brotherhood Scholarship SA workshops that they do for an additional 60 to 80 students. And they also have done ACT and SAT boot camps that also serve outside of that original group. And they also coach parents on an ongoing basis during this time of year on multiple evenings and across the schools. And in addition to, that's outside of the mentee work. Additionally, the College Bound Brotherhood scholarships that are awarded to our students this year, they have begun the work with 80 students. Those students, we only have 12 or 17 students who are in the mentee program. So the additional 60, 65 students are outside of that mentee work. Last year, the students in Antioch received 30 scholarships. Twenty-something of those students were outside of their mentee work. So the work, the additional work that is encapsulated in this contract covers that extra work that they are doing with our students.
Thank you. Other questions, please?
I think I might have my answer.
I, and this isn't on this group at all, this is just more a general observation. I think we're all faced with the challenge that the board itself and staff, that we get a little bit more ahead of this, if I could recommend that. So that it isn't the last board packet where this comes up because there are a lot of questions. And a number, several of us asked for additional information, which we did get over the last couple of days. I would have liked to have more time to visit myself, to make personal visits. I don't know how many visits the staff made. I understood it might have just been one or two. I think we need as a staff to make more, again, with all groups, smaller vendor groups, to make unannounced visits. That's just a fair thing to do. Again, this isn't pointy and brutal whatsoever. I had some individual questions. And I understand the essay, the scholarships, the mentee, that's pretty much self-explanatory because kind of your arms are on it. Where I asked some questions still, applying the, the raw data on the tutoring rather vague for myself. It says his numbers of students, but I didn't see any data as to how many times students were seen. Maybe, maybe they were, maybe they had 40, 80 students, 10 of them only, only came once. So I would have appreciated seeing how many total visits each student made and the aggregate number of that. It gave data on students that are soaring above 2.0 and below 2.0, but I didn't see the movement. Did they start above 2.0 and then move beyond 2.0? Or did they, were they beyond 2.0 to the beginning? So would appreciate more. I think we need to have benchmarks for every vendor group, accountability and benchmarks, and then assess their expectations. I would like to, I mean, it's come back, you're here to answer all of this, but I would have liked to have seen a staff recommendation as to the pros and cons of synopsis of how they feel that vendor group is due in meeting their expectations. See if I, anything else here? And some of this, I'm sure is going to be answered by the data dashboard. I mean, that's going to be a real integral part of all this evaluation. I think that covers probably some of the things I'd prefer to see.
Do you mind if I comment on, in all fairness to this particular vendor, we didn't give specific instructions about keeping a daily. But we have now asked all of our vendors to kind of do it daily, because I've been hearing from the board that that's kind of what they want to know, what are the hourly rate, what's the daily rate? So, and we're trying to establish kind of those norms and protocols for every vendor. So, and they were happy to do it when we just began asking and have been very, I mean, very.
Yeah, that's why I said I do a more universal.
Yes. Yeah, universally, we are doing that with all of our vendors this time that are at least under my realm. And so that is something I'm working with them all to establish protocols around doing that work and also entering the students into the data dashboard, as you mentioned, for effective tracking of the longitude of data that you're asking for.
So the data dashboard, there might not be a need for a certain time of year necessarily because it's going to be ongoing. Because without that, I would recommend we had time of year in which all vendors were sort of evaluated. But again, the data dashboard may.
No, that, the time of year when we evaluate vendors is an excellent way to go. And we are looking at the type protocol, so not dependent on the data dashboard, because it's dependent upon our quarter and semester systems for progress.
It makes sense to have the whole grouping of them, see, even compare them to see.
And that's how we're entering them. This was the year that we're building the data dashboard. And Cheryl's been working really closely with, I always get them confused between illuminated and.
Oh, illuminate and Iressol.
Iressol. With Iressol's company, I say, okay, what's the platform going to look like that we want to use? And it is similar to what you say, how can we take a group who's receiving this particular service and match them with a like group? So not match them with the entire population because it's not real data, but with students who were in the same place before the intervention or whatever we want to call it, service, and then how to have that come out. So I know she's had someone working with her, inputting all the names, anyone who's has ongoing services as students. So hopefully we'll be able to do a presentation for the board that actually shows the growth.
So I'm just going to say, a few months ago, I requested of the previous superintendent to list all the organizations and.
to list all the organizations and groups that come into the district to serve our students. And we have some groups that receive Title I funds and have been doing it for a really long time, and it's just really very interesting to see how much money Title I fund has been paid out to other groups without any question about data and how you're serving our students. And one such group is REACH, which is at quite a few of our schools, which has received large amounts of money, a Title I funds. So, I hope, when I, when I look at another list previously, I do know that Parents Connected have provided services to this district free of charge. And there is a list of groups that do that because they receive other funding. So I would hope that when we're questioning these contracts, that we have the same standards for every district that come in this group, come in here to serve our students, and that come in and will receive money from us, because they should all be held accountable. How many students they serve, what is the delivery of service, what is the outcome of those services, whether it's serving our special needs, our at-risk foster youth, we need to have a better tracking system. So, I am looking forward to Iressol's and the data dashboard, but I just want to say that we need to be consistent and we need to be clear. I do know that some of these groups can show more consistent data progress than others. And we just need to be more diligent about monitoring the progress of all of our contracts.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I agree with everything you've said, including, but not limited to. We've had issues with REACH for a long time. In fact, some of our schools don't even have REACH anymore. So, I agree, every, every, every group needs to be held to the same standard. However, having reviewed some of this, what I received, I'm just, I don't know, it always kind of shocks me when, when we try to pretend that a 2.0 is a GPA we're happy with and that it's college acceptable, because you and I both know it is not. So don't even go there with me. I've got seven kids that are going through college, okay? 2.0 will not get you into any university. It won't. You can get you, oh, DCCL, yeah, you can go there and you can start there. But to me, when you say, "I am college ready, and I'm applying for FAFSA, and I'm filling out these applications," and then you say to me, "We have 36 students at a 2.0," I just look at that and say, gee, that's nice. I just need to see a boost. To me, a 2.0 is not saying I'm college-bound. It's just not. And, and so when we put this all into data dashboard, all those things have to be taken into consideration. How many students? How many times do I see them? What was the GPA when they came in to me? What is their GPA as they're exiting me? As far as all of these groups, I'm glad, Deborah was able to access that from the former superintendent, but I don't think the rest of the Board was able to see that. The only one that I can pull just from multiple experiences is REACH. And not sure comparing them is the same, because they kind of do different things in a way, but, but the bottom line is the same. How much does it cost per student for tutoring? Because at some point, you have to say, wow, you know, you're spending $1,000 a student, what do we get at 2.0? Is that the best use of $1,000? Because then I look at the math program, which the name of the after-school math program has escaped me, the one that John Crowder is running. Yes. So what is the cost per student of that, and what is the outcome at the end? Do, do we know what they came in with? Do we know what they're exiting with? And what was the cost per student? That's a fair comparison. So, you know, those, those are my concerns with, with any vendor coming forward, not just this one, just any vendor. They all have to be measured by the same thing, which goes back to Diane and the data dashboard that she's been hammering on for low these many years.
Seven.
I was going to give you eight, but, okay, those, those were kind of my thoughts.
And I have an initial comment. I want to be consistent. Last year, I said I thought 75 was a little high for the program. I expected a lower cost. However, it's not this vendor's fault. For some reason, they've been operating without a contract, and it is February. So, not their fault, I don't want to, you know, mid-year do a course correction. I'm willing to continue at 75,000. I haven't heard a compelling reason to go to 100. And then next year, the results will be taken into our decision process. So my recommendation is to approve the contract at the same rate as last year and let them move forward with that amount of money.
I would support that recommendation at this point.
So, the only thing I would say to be fair is, if this group has already served those students and they've not been compensated, it is not fair to not pay them.
They were...
So, the only, the only thing I'm going to say is, is, you know, we have to look at service delivery, how the services were delivered. I will say, of most of the contracts that we have coming into this district, from what I can see, this is the only contract that does not pay a salary. So all of the money goes back into the district students. So it isn't, you know, to my knowledge...
I believe they get a salary.
To, to who?
Don't, don't you guys get a salary?
No, we don't get a salary.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And so the money goes back into the, the money goes back into the students. So if they, if they had a group of people that were not volunteering, was getting paid, then absolutely, but these people get no money from this contract.
And I should have added this, by the way. Due to 75, and there's a compelling reason to bring it forward, we can do it another day. We need to get them back in business. That was my point. Should have added that on, and I forgot to say it. So my suggestion would be approve the 75, come back with some more data. I mean, if there's 80 kids, it's pretty simple in my mind. You know, they came in with a, if you want to speak to that speaker's card, I'd appreciate it.
Actually, speak your time, because the subject should be closed. When the Board has discussion, there's no more public input.
Well, then I did it backwards, that was my problem.
Okay.
So, she can fill up. I'm, the Board agreed.
I'm just saying that...
I would like...
Proper rules of order.
My apologies. So in any way, what I'm suggesting, and it may or may not work, it's just a suggestion for the Board to consider a approval of 75, and then come back with the, the questions. I, I still don't feel like I've had my questions answered, so that would be my...
So you'd actually be approving this contract for $27,000? This would be a traditional contract?
Wait, for a total of 75 for the full, yes. And, and we need to question vendors that you cannot work without a contract.
Yeah, they should be working with a contract.
And, and some of that, I will put on our...
Absolutely.
...shoulders as well, not, you know...
No, I, I...
Vendors need a contract.
It's a two-way street.
What I am, what we are learning is that this Board would like to have contracts broken out more, not just by scope of service, but by actual, what are the driven costs of their salary, so that we don't have rumors or misinformation out there that, you know, that staff is receiving a salary, or these vendors are, when really, it's all going back to the students. So, we'll, we'll work on that.
And my comments were more as to Mr. Rulie's, where, where did they come in at the door? Where are they sitting now? You know, that kind of thing.
That's fair. So, anyway.
Thank you. Ms. Walker, you phone another...
Thank you.
Oh, you, I might give the bell one later.
There's no cards out there? There's no speak cards out there?
No.
It's a collectible.
First of all, first of all, thank you, Cheryl, for the presentation. There are some things that she missed. We offer a financial A- workshop. We offer a college tour. We make our kids on college fairs. We give us a summer MIP program with Mr. Crowder. We have, and we do have sign-in sheets to verify all our students that come in and out. We work with our parents. We don't do tutoring, so I don't know why you keep saying tutoring. We keep telling you what we do, and you keep putting on the, we do not tutoring. That's not our job.
I think you said tutoring.
You said tutoring.
Forgive me.
Forgive him.
Thank you.
Our welcome unannounced visits. We tried to give you guys data all last year. We begged to give you data, and none of you wanted it. Let's see. We have, we have well over, close to 200 students that we work with. Eighty-nine of them are just our scholarship students. Fifty of them are, are on the mentees. In addition to that, we work with, with the girls and other facilities. We also work with students that are in the summer program that are not in the numbers that I just gave. We also do, the college fair, we have students in there that are not in the numbers I gave you. Financial A- workshops with all the students in all of the companies and high schools. We also work with the kids that are in SAT and ACT prep classes that are not in those numbers. So we run over 200 students. So if you want to do your math and math and figure out what, what that average is out, and in addition to that, that is 100% service. We don't get paid for that. We work seven days a week, all night long, early in the morning. We don't get paid for that. So...
I just wanted to say something when you're done.
That's it. So, over it, one more thing. And then for, to answer your question about the 2.0, I don't know where you're getting that information from. Wait, wait, let me finish. But if you look at the contract, if it's attached to there, there should be an exhibit that I think, addendum that Cheryl had on there, talked about our kids versus the kids, the, the kids, the kids that are not in our program, as far as behavior, as far as referral, as far as suspensions, as far as exposures, and we exceeded all that.
Yes. I don't know where this came from. It just said, I mean, it came from the district.
It's in here.
It just says 36 students above 2.0, 10 students below 2.0. This is below the district average for African-American.
Okay, now let me, let me, since we're on that topic, it's not ours, GPAs. If we had the support that we should be getting from the school sites, maybe those grades will increase. We had two parents coming here, two of which are, which are Parents Connected parents, and they just sit there and tell all of you, I've shared with all of you for the last five, six, 10 years about the issue with schools and kids getting their grades up. But again, that fell on your ear. So, please don't come to us and tell us about what our kids' GPA is, when we can't even get the support from the district and/or the school site to bring the grades up. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I still have the same comment. The contract changed substantially from last year to this year to the $25,000. A recommendation, and if somebody else wants to make a recommendation or a motion, we need to get them back in business, go for 75 and then revisit this or table it for another day, and they will not be able to do the work and...
Well, I want to get them back in business, but I also want the justification, so I'm willing to do the, this and then have them come back. Maybe Cheryl can work, or Cheryl go... There you are. Sorry, I lost you in the crowd. Maybe Cheryl can come back with justification.
So actually, I'm, what I would be willing to do is approve the contract as it is, is what I would be willing to do, because we were given additional information about the 21 students who participated in SAT, the 65 students who are not mentees who have the college essays. And then last year, they had 30 AUSD students who were awarded a scholarship by the College Brown Brotherhood. And so, with seven of those were seniors and 23 were not mentees. The only thing that I'm concerned about is the level of service that Parents Connected has brought into this district and the lack of awareness about those services. So, once again, I'm in favor of approving this contract as is. Moving forward, I think if we want to apply scrutiny to any contract coming in, we have to set different standards. Last, you know, we just approved a contract that didn't have really clear standards, and so I don't know what the difference was for that, and so I think we just need to be clear about it. If we're not approving this contract as it is, I will not be voting anything else. And it's not personal, it's just we have to be fair.
Thank you.
So did you make a motion? Did anyone make a motion? Are we ready for a second? I didn't, wasn't, I just want to clarify.
A motion.
Because we need a motion and a second in order to...
So my motion is that we accept the contract as it is, and that we apply different standards moving forward immediately from today to every contract coming into this district, so the Board gets the information that they want on all of those contracts and service delivery for our students.
And we have a motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
There's a second, and I just want to have a conversation before we call for the vote. The reason I am not going to vote in favor is again, the 25%, the $25,000 increase. If the other vendor had come to us and said, "Here, we're doing this, it's $25,000 more," I wouldn't be approving it. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have two. All those opposed say no, nay.
No.
Three. Motion fails.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the contract for 75. Is that right? $75,000?
Twenty-something additional?
Yeah. Yeah. And then come back with the rationale.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I do.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Choose your three to two this time. And thank you, Ms. Walker, for your comments. Okay. Moving on, item for discussion by the Board, emergency preparedness strategy. We have that from Ms. Benson, right?
Yes. So, one of the reasons that I wanted to talk about emergency preparedness, our strategy in the district, is because I've been Googling current school sites all over the area, and I'm finding their emergency site plans, which are covered for the elementary and the high schools. And within those site plans are safety procedures for fire, the safety procedures for if there is a shooter, there's hazardous material, safety procedures. And so I just want to have a discussion about what we have in our district. And the other piece that concerns me is we have a high number of special needs students. And if there is an emergency at a school site where there are a number of, you know, students that would need extra assistance, how we are going to deal with those issues? I had not been able to find a plan, and so I am really concerned about that. What I did find on our website is a, like a basic safety card that, that has some earthquake preparedness that tells our parents to make sure they have the child's birth records and ID and any health issues that they have. But I think that we need to strategize about the risk assessment and emergency preparedness we have in all of our schools, no matter what the issues are, so we, that can, we can protect our staff and our students. And so that is the reason I'm bringing it up.
Thank you, Ms. Benson. So what I'm hearing is that you would like to ask if it's the will of the Board for us to perhaps have a work study or discuss our emergency preparedness strategy, and also the specificity to sped students. Is that the will of the Board? I can see that by a nod of a head. If that's something you want back, back, I can't speak, sorry, back to a future board meeting.
For a work study?
I can do a nod, yeah. I can do a nod.
Well, is there a timeline in this? My concern is, right now, we're in such a state of change. Are there resources to do this? And if there are, are we talking in three, you know, next month, three months, six months?
What we could do is just, we do, without talking about it here, what we can do is bring what we have. We do have an emergency preparedness plan in place, so we can start it as just us sharing with the Board what it is, and then if the Board at that time wants to ask us for further information or action, they can certainly do.
So we'll just put it for an inch and nine.
So, let's, by a nod of heads, I'm saying...
So you will give us that...
We will give you what we have thus far, and the Board can comment from there.
I know each school classroom has a plan listed in the classroom.
And we'll share that. So I have Ms. Diane Gibson-Greisly, nod. Fernando Navarro, how about you, Walter? Okay, so I'm seeing a consensus of the Board, and we'll bring that back. Thank you.
Thank you. Resolutions, we have resolutions for immediate action. A and B, I think we can take those together unless there's questions. Do we have a motion?
It's a move.
A motion from Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Benson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. We're moving on to Board Policies for First Reading. Any comment? Any questions?
Somebody's been working hard.
Well, yeah.
Staying at the nights.
I want to make a comment on 3350 travel expenses, and since this is first reading, we can give you information for an update.
Oh, wait, what are you on, 3350? You're using policy number.
Policy number, item number two, number 3350, I apologize. There's nothing in there that says, the superintendent authorizes everybody else. There's nothing that says who authorizes, the superintendent.
Yes.
I think should be the Board. I think we should have a, a conversation on how everyone want to do it, but now we don't have a policy on who approves the superintendents.
Can I get a nod of heads from the Board if that's the thing that you would like included in the policy that we've been back for a second first reading?
Who, who, why would the superintendent sign off on the Board president slash... Who, why would the superintendent sign off on the board president slash board member travel expenses? I don't know legally how that works, but...
Running out of people.
No. Would the board authorize the board? If I check it out. For example, if we're going to a CSBA conference, shouldn't the board approve the board's expenses to the CSBA conference as opposed to the superintendent signing the board's approvals?
I like that idea.
Because aren't we supposed to be the bosses?
Ms. Forster, from an auditing standpoint, does that present any problems with having checks and balances?
Well, the board is not, actually not employees of the district, and really, people who are, who sign on purchase orders or payments is actually, would be Stephanie, myself, or someone authorized to do that in the business department of the district. The board, she's only signing for the expenditure, for the paybacks of expenditures, not that you can go, not for approval.
No, no, that's what she said. Let's say I go to CSBA, and I have a $150 bar tab. Those of you who don't know me, I don't drink. But now I want the district to reimburse me.
You would want to have checks and balances, I think, by the superintendent, who is the employee of the entire board and not just one board member.
Correct.
So I do think it's a good practice.
But I don't think it's good practice for the superintendent to sign off on their own travel expenses.
Absolutely not. I agree.
So we need to have somebody different, and I don't think that it hurts in the accounting process to require two signatures. I'd like the board, just, I'm going to pick the superintendent. Maybe the board president and the business officer.
Or the vice president.
No, because it has to be OIE according to him. Or maybe the human resources person, but definitely the board president should sign off on all travel.
So, am I hearing that that's the will of the board?
Yes.
That they would like that? Walter? Okay. We will bring that back for a second first reading.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Or you for a second read. Yeah, you can do that as well.
So any other comments on those? I don't think I had any other ones. Board policies for first reading and deletion, any comments? And they're... Are you keeping up with us? Who's not keeping up with us, with the public?
Did we pass this?
That is number 21.
I'm still on 20.
Oh, you're still on 20?
I have a comment.
Okay, I'm sorry. So the, you want to talk about?
I got them in inches.
Well, okay. Start with which number?
First group, six through, six through nine. The whole...
Are you on 20?
I'm 20, yeah.
173? Six through nine.
Six, six through nine. The new verbiage for sustainability and energy and, I think somebody's changes are a little broad. I think this whole thing smells of lobbies buffet. We're changing the verbiage and leaving it as open to any interpretation. That's on that group. The second one would be 10. Then we're not, we're leaving out the dangers of marijuana. That's also, you know, that's a same, same thing. That always strikes me that we never talk about marijuana, but we're talking tobacco. Policy also, 13 and 14, about security. The new verbiage seems more like surveillance and security.
So did you have recommended changes to those, or?
No, I think we should talk about it.
You want to pull those?
Yeah, pull those in. Number 14, I have an issue with, and also 16.
So you want us to pull six through 16? Well, this is first reading, so now's the time to talk about them. So let's do them, just go down one by one, and, is that correct?
Yeah, you can discuss them, and if it's the will of the board to suggest changes, not just one board member, but the entire board, we certainly can do that.
Like I just did with the superintendent.
Yeah, well, the first group with issues of sustainability in green, you know, it's in specific, my question is, why are we modifying the language from what we had before? Which sounds to me like it leaves doors open to lobbies and manipulation beyond the common sense of conservationalism as opposed to environmental.
So let's go, let's do it this way. Your first one is item number what?
Uh, six.
Six. So let's go to 173 to this 77, and then tell us what you think the change should be.
Uh, just basically, I don't see any problem with the old verbiage on all of these different items. Why would we be modifying and drawing that line?
The County School Boards Association works with all of the new laws, regulations that come out, and they recommend policy that school boards should review and accept that is in accordance with those policies. Mr. Forster, did you want to state anything specific?
No.
About why we're changing these?
We're actually going through all these and updating the current laws and under CSBA. That's why you're seeing so many come forward. A lot of them are new that we don't have in our district that are recommended by CSBA that we implement.
Okay. Well, that was my concern. So what's the difference between the verbiage that we had before and now?
Mr. Forster?
I would have to, which policy? Which policy are we?
Across the board, all.
You would have to go to each individual policy and look at that particular policy. Anytime there's a new one, there would not be an old policy. Anytime it's a deletion, and we have a current policy, the policy will be attached to there with assignment, and then it's deletion of the current policy, so we can look at the line.
And each board staff report has in front of them what the material change, if it's not a new, if it's not a new policy, whatever material change is being, so in that specific item, Mr. Forster, can you tell us what's being changed, or is it a new policy?
I don't think we have one.
Okay, so now they...
So no, item number six.
Item six.
It had a one-page statement that says, "All employees of the district and board members shall be covered by blanket bond deletion," replacement with this that covers the existing laws and recommendations.
And there was not a policy for binding employees covered under CSBA. That's why that one was absolutely...
So that's how they go back and forth.
Yeah.
So I'll make a comment on the green policy and say that I know all school districts are going green, but part of what happens is it's really a huge expense. And I did note that our water bill was $44,000. I had no idea whether or not that included penalties, you know? So I, you know, I understand the concern in terms of going green, but some of the stuff that says, okay, for example, encourage students to walk to school. Our students do walk to school. But we also, you know, so our students ride their bikes to school. Our students do that. If you're out in the morning, you will see them. So the only, the only thing with some of this stuff about going green is it says little about safety. I mean, I'm very interested in going green, but we also have to consider the safety of our students and how that happens in and around neighborhoods. So I do understand some general concern, but, you know, it would cost a lot of money for this district to switch over to green. Green toilets, green closets, green, anyway.
So what I'm hearing on this one is a, is a general, not specific concern. So perhaps you'd like to make a motion to pull that item if there's a second, and then get back to staff with suggestions. We can bring it back and get the consensus of the board on what a suggestion might be, unless you have tonight a specific suggestion you would like made.
So this policy came to us from CSBA?
Correct.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree with Fernando on this one. It seems this is 3510, I don't know which number it is. It sounds like a smorgasbord of vendors slash, I don't know, people who want it, because, I mean, come on, let's, let's look at this. Providing fresh, unprocessed organic food in the district's food service program. What does that have to do with saving energy? And what does that have to do with walking to school? And what does that have to do with cleaning the grounds? I mean, this is just like a smorgasbord of, oh, let's just get everything we can. If this is just, if this is just recommended by CSBA, doesn't mean we have to agree with CSBA.
Correct.
Absolutely. So this particular one is just a little weird to me.
Yep, me too.
So I just get the feeling it went from a recommendation to a mandate, and that's what my protest is.
So on that one, you would like to...
Yeah, pull and research it for...
We don't have to have a motion poll. This is first reading, so you can just pull it out.
Go on to the next one.
Okay, so pulling item number six.
Six, yeah.
Board policy 3511.
35, like 10?
3510, yeah.
The way I can keep track.
The next one?
Next.
3511?
Also pull.
So here's the problem with this one. Where did these come from?
Yes, do you?
Can somebody tell CSBA to mind their own business and stay focused on educating students? We are supposed to now come up with a way to catch the rainwater?
The challenge is...
I think that's a city problem.
You'll see me out front tomorrow.
I think the challenge is we don't have the time and the personnel to write our own, so that's why they come here, and so if you want to pull that one...
Again, if there are, if it's not a policy, if you want to pull it, um...
Let's just see if we have a group yet, okay? So is there a, this one is seven, right?
Whatever it is, I'm just...
3511. Is there a will of the board to put in, do what, write it? I don't know.
Make suggestions in the interim, which we will bring back.
The next one's not much better. Now we gotta spend money to hire people to go inspect all the district facilities to make sure we're catching the water.
Which we already pay people to inspect facilities, but yeah, not for a while ago.
So I mean, it's a smorgasbord.
Funding opportunities, cost reduce, and we, I think we kind of do that because we have to. We don't have a choice. I'm sorry, I don't think that we should be the common doer for teaching and outreach on storm, water impacts. Maybe I'm wrong, but illicit discharge, detecting and elimination, such as maps and programs to detect and eliminate illicit non-storm water discharges. So that's a city problem.
Will of the board?
I say pull.
Okay, next.
You know, pardon me, Fernando, if I'm stepping on your...
No, you're helping me out. It's fine.
When you have some type of experience...
I will make, I will make one statement to the board. We are required for a storm water plan from our transportation area. We are required to keep a storm plan.
A plan is not the same as board policy, okay?
So we have six.
We already have...
Can you repeat those that you pulled, Ms. Gibson-Grey, that the board pulled for record keeping?
It was seven and eight.
Six, seven, and eight?
Yeah.
3510, 3511, and 3511.1.
Yes.
Thank you. And now the superintendent gets to take care of the garbage cans.
Okay.
Have to take care of a cost-effective integrated waste management program.
Item 10.
7.9, and I have no idea. 3511.1, integrated waste management.
Okay, tobacco-free schools. Now, the only thing about marijuana, I think that one falls under drugs.
Yeah.
Probably we have a policy against marijuana.
It is, we have a policy.
It's different than drugs.
Yeah, but granted, it...
It's the, it's the distribution that you probably made it with.
So this is what I'm going to say about this, is we have a lot of technical safety programs going on in the district right now. I know they work closely with the Students Services Group.
Correct.
So I don't know how generic this is. I know in California, all schools are required to be no smoking facilities, and you have to be within 100 feet of the building, although I know people don't...
They have to go to public, yeah.
In the public segway. People have to carry tobacco on campus, so teachers slash adults who carry tobacco products with them are actually in violation of the law.
Okay, and so if the drugs are covered somewhere else, you're okay with tobacco?
This has always been an issue with me with the, how it's smoked. I mean, it's called marijuana, you can take it as a pill, and that's always been a loophole that's always coming. If you have an issue with, you know, you have a medical condition, you can take it in a pill, but you don't have to smoke it.
I think the particular policy, yes, is just marijuana is not considered a tobacco.
That is an exception for prescriptions.
And so I'm fine with it is one.
I am too.
I'm just sure we have policies for drugs. Okay, so we are on...
Next one would be 13.
14.
35, 14, board policy.
Okay, and your concerns?
The change that they're asking for is now for surveillance cameras. They're using them in the guise of security. Not necessarily. I have an issue with nearly willy adding surveillance, surveillance society on our schools. It's number 13, 315.
We currently, we currently have security cameras on our campus, and if we do not have it in policy, it opens us up to existing litigation, and we have them at most of our campuses.
And school site safety is very important, as Deborah.
Yes, absolutely. You know, that's, that's what I want to focus on. That's my pet peeve, is school site safety.
I was waiting for that.
And violence prevention, every school site.
So I'm fine with that one.
We have to have the cameras up, and if we do, they must work.
Must work, right?
Correct. So we must have a policy.
So I think, since we don't have a policy, I think we should in the very near future consider, implement, the board should consider implementing a policy, writing one. It doesn't have to be two or three paragraphs, but we need to cover ourselves if we don't have one in place.
Oh, that's what this is, the cameras? Oh, nevermind. So you would pull this one, or is this one move forward?
Cameras?
Cameras, I'm true.
I'm okay with cameras too.
Okay, that's fine. This is my concern. Item number 14 regarding...
Which policy number?
3515.2. Disruptions. Disruptions, specifically, we're talking about, you know what, no, I'm sorry.
No, it's four.
It's 50. My issue was with the, with the policy with, I guess, they wanted to specify firearms on campuses. That's 50, right?
Uh, yes.
I'm on the wrong one. Yeah, 3.
So I'm just going to make a side comment and say, we use quite a few emergency preparedness plans, and they include ECO and behavior disruption policies in those plans, because you would have to be prepared to escort a student or have the staff to do that, so...
And follow what the board policies, because remember, this policy is your policy that gives us direction on how to. So in order for us to include all of that in many of our safety plans, we would need to have a policy.
I'm okay with this.
Some of that could be in 60,000.
If we want to review it for later, but I'm okay with it. I'm okay with it, don't you? Anybody else?
No, fine.
Who's next?
Leslie, 16, 3553. My issue there is with, and it was commented today about the backend dangers of being hacked, that we're disseminating student information nearly willy, but really thinking about keeping the confidentiality and protecting it.
3553, the one that talks about free and reduced price level?
I think that's the intent of this policy, is to make sure that we're keeping everything as confidential as possible and tightening up our, our previous board policy, I don't think was as, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Forster, I do not believe it was as strongly worded about your concern. So I think this may address it in a more...
Okay, now, is this a new, a new policy of disseminating those data points?
No, I do not. Is it, Mr. Forster, a new policy? I believe we had a policy before.
Revision.
It's a revision with stronger language. That's my understanding.
What you can do via ed code.
But in the only information that I saw giving out, which is appropriate, is if a student transfers to another district or private school, that, um, the qualification would be sent forward on the parent's request, so that they wouldn't have to reapply. I think it's to make it easier for them, not giving them a data file.
No, we're not farming this information to different entities.
No, 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 no. This will prevent that.
I understood wrong, then. It gives us determinations for a CalRASH program, so other programs that qualify. And then it, the last paragraph talks about for local agencies, the terminal ability for participation in other programs, that we can actually use that for qualifications into our program.
Right. The only thing I just want to say about this is that oftentimes, if a student transfers to another district and that they receive and reduce lunches here, but we fail to send that data, then it causes a problem for that student at that school and it makes it difficult for the parent if we don't send the proper data. And then this is just saying, you have to send the, the data that impacts the student if they transfer to another school. At least that's how I understand it.
That's the parent request, yes.
Well, it's not really the data. It's like this student has been approved.
Absolutely.
We're not keeping them a file or anything.
Well, of course, it's not the whole file, but things that are relevant.
Even their files.
Absolutely.
I'd rather so bring different information. You might have seen me a couple days ago, there was a TV report that in two thousand and fourteen, Permian Californians have their, uh, security breached. Two thousand and fifteen is twenty-three million, which means that two out of three Californians have had their data broached. Pretty scary stuff.
Don't go hide under my bed.
And that's out of our spirit and books. We'll be moving on.
We should cheer everyone up.
For first reading and deletion, delete board policy, fiscal accounting reporting. Do I have a motion? We have a motion? Is there a second?
Which one?
Number twenty-one. Delete, um, board, delete board policy, fiscal accounting and reporting.
We're replacing it with an updated one, so...
Correct. Right. So is that a second?
Yes.
Thank you. A motion, a second. All those in...
Who's the first? I'm sorry.
Sorry, I should start calling them again, sorry.